So now you got it. Oh, you did record. Okay.
Okay, I'd like to welcome participants to the planning, virtual planning board meeting of April 12th. Like to have a call to order. Make sure quorum, Mr. Coons. Present. Ms. Delicio.
Yeah.
Ms. Foley.
Here.
Mr. Gilbert.
President.
Mr. Olney.
Here.
And Mr. Russell.
Here.
It's like we have a full quorum tonight. Before we get started, like to remind all board members, guests to be asked to be recognized by the chair if they wish to speak. This meeting is being recorded. First item on the agenda is acknowledge receipt of correspondence. The board would like to acknowledge it received a letter from Lorraine Iavoni on March 24th, Sheila Hill on 331, Waterways Application on 46 and a correspondence from Glofsky and Glofsky, which arrived late and didn't make it into the agenda, but it's on a opinion of adequate frontage on a shared driveway on 19 and 21 Forster Street pertaining to sections 5.1 and 6.2.8 of our zoning bylaws. So more to come on that on our next meeting. Right now I'd like to open up to the public for any items that are not on the agenda with a limited time, two minutes.
Ron, this is Sheila. Can you see my hand up?
I can't, but go ahead and speak. I am got a million screens here, but yep, I see it now.
Thanks. Over about six months ago, I think it was in September of 2020, one Peter Gordo came to present to talk with the planning board. He had Mark Glofsky with him. And they appeared before you guys to with a proposal to locate a life sciences company campus in the LCD. Can you give me an update on any follow through with him on that project?
I have not heard anything from him. Sue, any, any correspondence from Mr. Gordo?
Yeah, I would just say that they did. They did not come to present a, to present a proposal for for anything in the district. What they had written was a letter that said if the town were looking to encourage development, that it might consider a number of zoning changes to make it more to more appealing and more helpful to people who are looking, but it certainly was not a proposal to any specific development.
But what would it not be the idea to contact them? I mean, that seems like a worthy candidate for commercial development in the LCD.
I have, I have been in contact with the landowners.
No, I'm talking about Gudrow.
Oh, he is, he is no longer. My understanding when I last spoke to him that he was no longer providing services for them. I don't know if that has changed again, but the last that I spoke to him, he was not searching for additional areas for them.
Do we know the name of the life science company?
No, I do not.
Well, I just would make a closing remark. That's the kind of encouragement. I think that such a proposal needs and the kind of company that should be encouraged to look at that property and see what we can do commercially. I know we have so many smart people in town, so many entrepreneurs that could connect us with some bioscience or software companies. It would be very good candidates for a project in the LCD. And I would like to encourage the planning board maybe to reconstitute their committee and go ahead and look, look to some of those companies. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So our next item on the agenda is on April 1st, Diane Bucow, town clerk, requested some time to speak to us on her research and history of elected officials to the planning board. She's here to give us results of her research and ask questions to ensure we are all on the same page. So with that in mind, Diane.
Hi, hi, everybody. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I am Diane Bucow. I am your new town clerk. Very happy to be so. In preparing the election in from May, there was a little bit of confusion on the term limits for the planning board. So with that said, I reviewed the last 10 years of all elected officials and the assessor, the constable, housing authority, the library, the moderator, the planning board, the school committee and the selectmen, just to make sure that we had a historical easily accessible research document. And what I found was, I think the question that came up was, I think it was Christina who asked why she had to have a three year term, run for a three year term as opposed to a two year term. And I was surprised that there were even three year terms, but in 1983 Manchester changed their bylaws to make the planning board terms all three years as opposed to the state, which has planning boards at five years. So then what happened is there were two. What happens is sometimes people either resign or step down or and their terms are not finished. And so they go for election, but they don't go for election for a three year term because you have to stay on the same rotation. So it was Mary Foley who in 18, I believe, won a seat. It was just a two year seat because it would have been vacant the year before. It was Mr. Coons's seat. He, I believe it wasn't Mr. Coons's seat. Who was vacant? Who stepped down?
Peter Canny stepped.
That's, that's who it was. And then he didn't, he didn't run for election in 17. No one got the seat. So then in 18, Mary Foley ran and she got it. And that was just a two year term to fulfill that three year term. And then again, in 2020, there was another two year term that needed to be finished. And that was whose term, who stepped down at that point?
Maybe that was Peter Canny.
That one was Peter Canny. The other one I thought was.
Maybe it was more.
I think it was Mr. Coons because he definitely didn't run.
Right.
I can I tell you that, excuse me, Mr. Coons, Mr. Coons served for a total of about 10 years. Always finished his terms.
He did.
He's on there somewhere. He should be there and he can probably verify it. Now, I, I.
So his term was up in 2017 and he chose not to run.
That's correct.
Right, there you are. And so no one ran and no one got that seat. So the following year, Mr. Coons ran again. He ran for a three year term and Mary Foley somehow ran for that two year term. So going forward, I think what we should do on the ballot and et cetera is explain if there's just a two year term or you write running for a two year term to fulfill an unexpired term. So then there wouldn't be that much confusion going forward. But so I just, I didn't do it to bother anyone and make any problems. I just wanted to have it clear in my mind. I don't want to make a mistake on a ballot and have people's term limits, term expiration dates get all messed up. So if you guys have any questions on that, I'm happy to try to answer them. And I hope that I answered the questions that I think it was Mary and Christina brought up to me.
So Mary's term where she ran and was elected is a three year term, correct? Or that term now is three years.
No, she's in a two year term. She ends in 2022.
I see.
Diane, I think there's a slight difference. I think if you're finishing off someone's term because they resign, you get appointed by the Board of Selectmen. You don't, there's not actually an election.
You get appointed to the next local election, but then you need to be elected to stay on.
Appointed to serve the balance of the term that was just vacated and then you're up for election.
No, no, you have to, you have to, you can only be appointed till the next election. And then you run for election to fill out the balance of the term.
We're saying the same thing. Okay.
Any other questions from the board to Diane?
Nothing for me.
Thank you for clarifying all that. It was a lot of work. I know. Thank you.
You're welcome. Who's speaking?
This is Christine.
Oh, hi Christine.
Whatever you want to call me. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll call you whatever. But I did, I fixed your voter registration. By the way, I just mailed it out to you today. So you will be on the ballot as Christina.
Thank you.
I will call you Christine now from now on.
Diane, this is Chris. I'd like to welcome you to the position of town clerk. We're glad to have you.
Thank you. I spoke with your daughter the other day.
Oh, good.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure to be here.
Thanks Diane. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you very much for your time. You guys have a great rest of the meeting. I'm going to sign off.
All right. Thank you.
Good night. Thank you. Bye bye.
Okay. We talked a little bit last time about preparing a sewer and water frequently asked questions. I think Gary was leading the charge on that. He had met with Chuck Dam. I think that's been completed now. And Gary, did you want to just give the board an update of where that document is going?
Well, it's in a, it's in the SharePoint folder. Originally, I thought that we, the planning board would could lead a charge to write just a FAQ to clarify the long presentation we got by Chuck, which some people found a bit confusing, some of the things he said, but he gave a ton of information, obviously. And then as it evolved, as I started talking to Chuck to try to write something up and then Greg Fetterspiel, it, it seemed best that Greg and the Board of Selectmen would, I don't know what the word is, sponsor this FAQ. So it's going to come from the Board of Selectmen. If it ends up on the town website somewhere, it will be them putting it there. But as it stands, Greg and Chuck Dan agree with the accuracy of the FAQ that I wrote. And I think it sort of simplifies a bunch of complicated issues. The main upshot is that there's a lot of capacity because for the past eight years, Greg has led the charge for the first time really to step up the amount of money spent to fix leaky pipes. And it's an ongoing effort and, and that every single year that continues on, we get more and more capacity. The question for us as a town politically is going to be how we want to use that capacity. But there's capacity there both for potable water and for sewage treatment. There's no sense going into any details on it because that's not what this meeting is about.
Right. All right. Thank you, Gary.
So I guess, Ron, I have a comment. This is Christine.
Mr. Delicio.
I just, I don't recall discussing, talking about a frequently asked questions document at all at the last meeting. So I just.
Well, it was on the gender and it was to be talked about because there was some final point. Chuck Dan was on vacation. We couldn't get that straightened out. And then I think Gary got some answers and clarified that.
But I don't recall talking about making a frequently asked questions.
As I said earlier, this is not coming from the planning board. This is something I took upon myself to write because I thought the town could use, use it, benefit from it. And I've gotten a lot of support that the town has needed to prepare something like this for a while. So I just ended up being a document I prepared, as I said, basically with Greg and Chuck.
I didn't question what you said, Gary. Ron introduced this as something that the board had discussed. And my comment was, I do not recall discussing this. That is it.
Yeah, no, I guess it wasn't. The FAQ itself was not discussed.
Thank you. So if the record is going to reflect that, I would like it clarified.
It wasn't discussed, but it was on the agenda is what I meant.
Ron, this is Mary. I have some comments as well. Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. I didn't hear you. Um, yeah, so we definitely did not discuss this. And so I'm assuming Gary just put this together. So one question is, who do I send comments to because I questioned some of this data and there was a lot of data left out. And I guess the opening memo to the planning board from Gary Gilbert, he's stating this. Chuck Dam spoke at the March 22nd meeting. He spoke at the March 8th meeting. And yeah, so I have a lot of questions. I kind of have a few pages of questions on this. So should I send it to the Board of Selectmen or to Chuck Dam?
Yeah, I would send it to Greg.
Is he still on vacation until the 15th?
Yes.
I don't know his schedule.
Yes.
Okay. And I, so and I, again, it's not a planning board document, but I would think that the an engineer stamp would want to be on this or some such thing if this is coming out of our DPW engineering department.
Okay. All right. Next item. On March 23rd, I received an email from Sarah Melish from FinCom asking me to attend a meeting on the 25th, which was two days later to explain the LCD study, which was in the FinCom's hand. I had a previous commitment that day and asked to be scheduled for their next meeting. Or I suggested to have Mary Foley attend in my absence, and she is the liaison to the FinCom and the author of the study. So Sarah agreed to have Mary stand in for me and answer any questions the FinCom may have. And Mary, I, can you explain what happened and why it's back in our hands, what their concerns were?
Ron, can I just interject quickly? I think it's a little confusing when you said the LCD study. It's a, it's a request for funding for an LCD study. It's fun to clarify to people because there are a lot of studies going on.
Right. It was a request for us funding.
Thanks. Sorry. Sorry, Mary. Go ahead.
Thanks, Ron. So I think it's important that the board members are aware of what happened at that FinCom meeting. A few basic facts. The majority of the planning board members voted to pursue funding for an LCD development study. That was the vote. Ron, as you said, that you asked me to represent the planning board at the March 25th FinCom meeting. The FinCom members had further questions as to the goal of the study and how the $50,000 budget was determined. So I spoke to those matters. Unbeknownst to me, Gary Gilbert introduced as a planning board member, spoke after me and proceeded to state that he opposed the planning board's vote on this proposed study. He incorrectly stated that the study had been proposed before and voted down. It had not. He then stated that the town planner would go after a state grant to study the LCD. Mr. Gilbert went against the majority vote of the planning board and attempted to usurp the will of the board. And I would say to the chairman, if you have any further questions on this occurrence, Gary Gilbert should be able to answer. As to the FinCom questions and concerns, they questioned the 50,000 price tag. And that does appear quite high, but that is what the town planner put out as a price for a similar study. I do believe that the study could be much lower. They asked if we had the capability to do this in-house within our planning department. And I think that's a good question. Do we have that level of expertise? That would be a good route for us to take, at least for some of the components. I know we thought we'd get a lot more out of the site analysis through the MAPC study than we actually did. It is clear that as a board, we do need to do our job and get the appropriate studies done to guide properly, to properly guide any potential growth in town. That is our key responsibility. We as a board should review what we want addressed and answered by the study, determine a more comfortable cost point perhaps, and bring this back to FinCom to review. So I think it's a good time now as a board, since we did vote to move forward with this proposal to FinCom to discuss what we could potentially do in-house, what we still want to get out of this type of study and, and then bring it back to FinCom.
Okay, thank you. It is a short fuse. I think they're trying to set the budget by the end of this month. So any decisions we make, you know, going forward with this or any other ideas would have to be done today. I don't think that we don't have another meeting before the deadline. So I'd like to move forward with any any thoughts on doing, on continuing with this study and honing it and defining it much a little bit in better terms. Some of these, the questions that FinCom had was with, from what I saw on the tape was, as Mary said, do we have in-house capabilities on some of these items? I know they were talking about calculating water and wastewater usage by Chuck Dam. And so I would, any thoughts on that from any of the members?
Ron, this is Christine. Again, I brought it up maybe last meeting or the meeting before. My opinion on this was that if the LCD group with one representative from each board was still intact, this would be a few months into it and we would have that information. But for some reason, this board keeps voting that idea down, but now FinCom thinks it's a good idea to do some of this in-house. So again, I think that board should be reinstated. We have a lot of smart people on these boards. And we should be using them together to research this area. And if we need to go out, out of house, we would have known this by now. So I still don't understand why we wouldn't as a board recommend researching this together as a multi-purpose board. Doesn't make any sense at all to me. I think we should talk about that again and then lower the price tag for things that we can't do in-house.
Sorry.
Mr. Russell?
Yes?
Any comments on the study?
Okay. Yeah, I still think it's completely unnecessary. If, if we were doing our work that we started with the 40R and we're now shifting towards a larger conversation about that district, that work informs the same things that you're asking for in this study with the exception of the Gordon College property. So this still to me represents just a huge waste of money. There's no specifics in terms of how would you translate this to an RFP, which is probably why the price seems high and unrelated to any deliverables. And I just think it's pointless. I really don't have anything else to say about it.
Mr. Olney?
So I think there's a lot of confusion about what this study is supposed to do. I think a lot of people have the idea that this, we're going to be creating some sort of a master plan for this district and lay out the uses and lay out the roadways and turn this all over to the owners and say, okay, now make it happen. But that's not what we're doing here. What we're doing is trying to establish a zoning bylaw which will establish what uses we want to see in that district and some performance criteria and how they should perform, what the setback should be, what the building should, the building height, that kind of thing. And not dictate what the development is going to be and how much it's going to impact the town one way or the other, because we really won't know until the owners of the property come forward with specific proposals as to what they want to do. So you know, there, there probably could be a study done, which would help us establish what the zoning criteria should be. And I think the 40R was that, that whole process was an attempt to start that process. But I think it's gotten a little bit off the tracks now with people trying to specify much more specifically what they want to see there as opposed to how this site should be developed in a more general way. So I think we should be looking at the forest and not looking at the trees and the branches of the tree at this point. Now, does that require multi-board participation? Maybe there might be a workshop where that could happen. It'd be interesting to hear what the Concom has to say about valuable land there. Maybe it'd be interesting to discuss it with the FinCom when we can figure out what tax benefits we might get out of it versus operating costs that the town will have to bear as a result. But I don't, you know, I think this could be an ongoing process. It doesn't need to, we don't need to have a a fixed plan in mind to go forward here. What we really want to create is a framework that allow that fixed plan to to happen over the next several years. It's not going to happen at once. Even Symboli is talking about a five or 10 year plan to develop it. So I think we just have to establish criteria and I think we can do that ourselves and make it happen. So that's where I'm at at the moment.
Mr. Coons, any comment?
Yeah, I'd like to get Sue Brown's opinion on, I think we've gone over the study thing a bunch of times, but I'd like to get her opinion on what she'd like to see. It would help her.
Ms. Brown, any comments on the study?
Thanks, Lauren. Well, it's true that we expected that we would get much of the information that we needed with the 40R study and it was heading in that direction. Much of it was derailed because of people's impatience with or when the 40B came in, that really switched people's attention and brought a lot of fear to the table. So I have discussed with MAPC changing the scope of work for that study. And our up, we're up next to, at some point tonight, we were going to look at that and discuss it. So if we want to do it now, but I think with what we can, how we can pivot with that technical assistance from the MAPC and through some decision-making on the board with the board itself, I think that we can get to the information that we need at the level that we need it with that technical assistance, including general impacts to water and sewer, how much land might be taken up by parking, how many residential units, the type and character of what we want to see up there. And most importantly, the uses. So I think we can get that in a reasonable and prescribed manner without asking the town for more money for a study. And I guess when we have that discussion a little later on, we'll we can decide. I don't know if you want to kind of wait for a vote on whether you want to resubmit something to the FinCom now or after we've had that more extensive study, extensive discussion, unless you want to pull it up now.
Okay. And Mr. Gilbert, any comments?
Thank you, Sue.
Thanks.
Yeah, I went and spoke to the FinCom and I was quite upfront and told them I was part of a minority of two people that voted against this. And I just explained why that things have changed. I don't feel a study is needed. We've done enough studies. We did a whole master plan with plenty of studies in it and plenty of meetings. And a number of things have changed and some of the aspects of this study, we could figure out there ourselves. We already are on track, it seems to me, to come to some conclusions about the kinds of land uses we want to see there. We've got some information to work with from the 40R consultancy from, through the MAPC. And Sue just said that we can sort of morph the, the free help we're getting from the MAPC to do our bidding and, you know, if we provide direction where we want them to. Our bidding and, you know, if we provide direction where we want them to. Help us, we can get some of this done under that current grant. So. I would just reiterate that I'm not in favor of spending money on an additional study for this area. We're getting there on our own.
Okay.
Ron, I have a follow-up, please.
Yes.
The planning board voted on LCD study. It was exactly that, an LCD study. It is turned into. A Mr. Symboli overlay project. We're ignoring the Western. Gordon Woods project. This is not incorporating the entire LCD. And that was what this study was supposed to do. And for some reason, this board thinks that. Mr. Symboli's property and the surrounding properties there are the only things that are important at this point. So if we're going to talk about the LCD, it's my opinion that we need to incorporate the whole thing, not just one little spot. And that was the purpose of the multi-member board to talk about the entire LCD, not one particular section.
Okay, thank you.
So we're talking about two different things.
Well, I just say I disagree with that. I'm thinking about the whole LCD every time we talk about it. And it can be, you can handle different areas of it through through overlay, an overlay approach or not. There's many mechanisms to do that.
Then we should be doing it concurrently. No, we should be doing it concurrently, not.
One person at a time, please.
They're not two separate studies and I don't believe and I.
We're only studying one area.
No.
I've asked you to, Christina, I've asked you to not interrupt when one member speaks. Please show respect for other members. Thank you.
I think a number of the members of the board are capable of thinking of the whole LCD at once. And when we talk about potential setback requirements or we talk about potential land uses. My impression anyhow is that we're thinking of the whole LCD. And how we handle it, we may have a consensus that we want to do an overlay approach so that part of it is dealt with a little differently than. Another part of it, that has yet to be determined and I believe that we can determine it. And come to a conclusion on our own.
Well, I like the idea of that. Maybe we can get some money from MAPC instead of spending town money on this. I agree, things have changed. We're going to, I agree with Mr. Only that we should find out what we want up there first before. Studying things that may or may not come to fruition. So I'm concerned moving forward with the study now.
I would like to make one final comment. I'm a little bit concerned over MAPC's ideas all the time. I think it's time that we take this some money and make sure that this is what Manchester needs and not what the MACP wants for our LCD. They give us downtown Beverly, downtown wherever, and this is not Manchester and. MAPC has cookie cutter designs and they expect that to fit. And I don't think it fits always in Manchester.
Well.
I think we should spend our own money and get our own input, input, our own ideas, our own requests, not always MAPC's.
Well, I think we're.
Free means. It looks like everybody else is downtown and I don't think that's what Manchester wants.
Ron, if I may.
Go ahead, Mr. Russell.
Yeah, I I take issue with this. I think this has to do with your deep-seated disrespect for the for the profession. We've been hearing this kind of comment since the beginning of your tenure and I'm frankly tired of it. MAPC provides technical assistance and best planning practices. And we can adopt them and mold them, use them, discard them as we need. We're not having some mysterious plan forced upon us. This is.
I didn't say that at all. I think we might have different ideas. That's it. We don't, we should have other ideas besides.
And work with them. That's our technical assistance. These are the professionals. And you need to understand that professional planners work in all scales, all scopes, all types of cities, all types of towns. That's what we do as planners. Just because MAPC is coming out of a state agency. Doesn't mean that they don't know what happens in small towns. It doesn't mean they don't listen to people. And it doesn't mean that we can't use that assistance, use best practices and mold it to our own community. To say that it's illegitimate because it comes from outside is absurd.
I not use those words and please don't put words in my mouth. I just said there's other planners. And it might be a nice change to use someone else. Did not use that word.
Okay, I apologize that I used the incorrect word, but the sentiment remains the same.
No, it didn't.
Okay.
It's worth, I think Brown raised her hand, but it's worth reinforcing that we're, we have some. Use of MAPC under a grant. This is my understanding anyhow. We have a grant to have some free work from them and. Right now it's been oriented towards developing a 40R. We're sort of going in a different direction, but it's my belief that. Sue Brown has told me that we can make use of that grant, that technical assistance. Under a different set of criteria that we provide for them and they will provide us some backup and information. Based on our direction solely and not any outside idea or turning us into Beverly. Sue could confirm that.
Sue, did you want to respond to Gary's comment? I believe we're going to be going into this today anyway.
Sure, sure. I mean, I I really also, I must reiterate that. MAPC is a regional planning agency with professionals from many walks and from many communities. And it and they're not creating something that they present to us. They listen first, they get our input and then create. And offer their expertise to help us, in this case, create regulations. In some cases, it's. A master plan. In some cases, it's a site plan, but they do all levels of work. So. Yes, the scope that we have, the technical assistance that we left. We believe that we can pivot if we can agree as a board and. Create or get the technical assistance to answer the type of questions that we want, including revenue projections, community impacts. Looking at various scenarios so that we can assess them to see how we want to move forward in the LCD. I hope that clarifies.
Mary, you have your hand up.
Yes, I do. I I think we've we've lost. Sight on all of this. This this proposal that the majority of the planning board voted on. Was for the limited commercial district in its entirety. MAPC, to Christine's point, has been looking at a small segment. If they want to expand their scope to all of the limited commercial districts. And the planning board can work directly with MAPC. Then perhaps we can get somewhere with this. We currently in this process have not been working directly with MAPC. So if we're able to guide them specifically what we need. As a study. It's something to entertain, but. The the idea that, you know, and there is, there is. The. The thought that grants are starting to shape our town as opposed to the town shaping the town and. Sometimes doing a study outside of a state agency or agencies that we've always used is going to give us a different viewpoint. And. To what we were looking for, overarching limited commercial district, not just certain spots of it. So I think, you know, if we're going to try to put a peg in a round hole or whatever the expression is, we better be really clear what we're doing.
So I think our discussions tonight will be taking the MAPC framework and trying to mold it into what we want to see in that in that district. Regarding land uses and regulations and. What design standards. So I think the next part of the meeting will be discussing that. And possibly we can get the remaining monies from MAPC for them to help us. Memorialize what we decide we want up in that area.
Excuse me, Ron.
Yes, Gary.
I just want to be clear. We have always, at least I have been always very clear when we've talked about studying the LCD. Especially as we started in with the 40R, that we were looking at one area in particular. Because it's the most logical for development. It's already previously disturbed. There are actors there who are ready to work and ready to do something. And I I take issue with, again, this false narrative that we're only looking at a small piece of it. That's not true. We were looking at, the area we're looking at includes nearly all of the available open. Land to be developed except for the Gordon College land. That can be a different discussion. It's it's a completely different universe on the other side of all that conservation land. Let's focus on where there's urgency and where there's logic.
Those are urgency and logic in your opinion, right? Let's just be clear. Urgency and logic in your opinion.
In my opinion, and in a reasonable person's opinion, we have a site. That has been cleared as a quarry where there's already some development. It's underutilized. There are people who want to do things. Why are we not going to look at that with some urgency?
We had someone come and talk to us, I think about the other property. So I I'm.
We did not.
Not understanding.
Have anyone do that. We had someone came and ask us to consider zoning changes, which is what we're trying to do. If we would focus on our job of talking about a zoning framework, we would be through this already.
In one area.
In one large area that makes the most difference to the town.
Ron, can I say something here?
Mr. Only, go ahead.
I'd like to back up Gary a little bit. If Gordon College had actually had a presentation in front of us to consider for developing. Its land, yeah, then we should be looking at it, but they are. The fact is they aren't. Whereas we have Mr. Symboli on the other side, who's got a grand plan for redeveloping. His property and we should be responding to it. To spend time dealing with Gordon College, which is frankly miles away and separated by all this conservation land with a different road access. It doesn't make much sense to me. I'd also add that I don't think MAPC has been off on their own without our guidance. We've had presentations made to us. Sue's been. Feeding us back all of their comments. We have drafts to look at. This is not an MAC project. It's our project. And MAPC is doing it on our behalf, and I think that we should set the record straight on that.
And I believe Gordon College is not interested in speaking with us. I think Sue tried contact with them again and they're not interested in talking to us.
Ron?
Go ahead.
And I just want to clarify that. So all along I've been in touch with Gordon College and. They have all along said when they're ready that they would come to us. They were close to being ready before the pandemic. When the pandemic hit, that changed a lot of things. For that college, for many colleges, they're reconsidering. And when I reached out to them recently, they didn't say that they they didn't want to speak to us. They said that they still weren't ready because now they're even reevaluating what they were evaluating before. So. I would expect that we will continue to stay in contact and when they feel. Clear about what they want for their property that they will come before us, but. I don't think, and I frankly, I think that it's not wise to wish and create zoning. Specific to any use there without knowing what their intent is long term. So. I just would hope that people would be patient with that and kind of accept when I provide these updates that. That's what's going on and I'm trying to lead the town to the best, to the best possible outcome.
Okay, so I think what I'd like to do is go into the next, on this subject, I think it kind of segues into the next discussion we're going to have on the LCD. S G O D slash 40R area.
Excuse me, Ron?
Yes.
I have one more slightly different point to raise. About that stems from the finance committee meeting on the March 22nd.
Go ahead, Mr. Gilbert.
This is directed at Mary Foley. I guess in the interest of transparency, I'd like Mary to explain what document. Or what resource she was relying upon when twice in that week, that last week of March. She said at two different public meetings, ours and the FinCom's meeting. That the master plan number for projected increased revenue that the town needs is obsolete. The two to three million dollar number, which was just reiterated in an article by Greg Fettersfield in The Cricket just a week ago. That that, those increased. Annual tax revenue goals are somehow obsolete and not legitimate. Where did that come from?
Those came from emails with the town administrator.
That's not my understanding to be true. Is there a way you could share those emails with the board?
Sure, if you'd like.
It's hard to imagine.
You asked me.
Need extra revenue.
No, you asked, where was that? I was referencing that what was stated in the master plan. That we needed two to three million generated revenue. For capital infrastructure needs. The finance committee. Reworked their numbers and they now. Have a three million dollar budget yearly for infrastructure that they did not have before. So when I was emailing with the town administrator. He clarified that, yes, that had changed, things shift. And that it would be a good idea to still generate money, but they don't need that what they were presenting in the master plan. And that's when I said it would be nice if FinCon. Came and spoke with the planning board so we knew exactly what our target revenue was. Or would be.
Well. I think you may be confusing some numbers with some other numbers. The our strategic goals. Towards increased revenue is different than what we're annually spending. One is strategic, one is tactical. The FinCom's more, more, excuse me, let me finish. The FinCom is more involved just in annually, our annual expenses, which is the tactical part of it. Again, if you've got something that you saw read in writing that says otherwise, it would be pretty helpful. For the board to know about it because I believe that this target increased revenue number is still a very valid number. For us to keep in mind. It's not 12 million. It's just two or three million and more revenue. That's something that we have the land, the resources for. The resources to be able to to facilitate and accomplish. I think it would be, it's a very important thing for the town.
Yes, and I'm not confusing my numbers. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to move on and maybe circle back to this study. After we get through with, maybe we may have some different thoughts after we get through with our discussions on the. Feedback summary from the LCD spreadsheet, what our steps are, you know, where the where the planning boards should be going in the next few months. So. I'd like to continue discussions on the ideas for draft regulations, for bylaw changes, design standards and land uses in the LCD. You know, step one, what do we want there? Number two, is it feasible? Number three, give the, give to MAPC. Planning board-driven scenarios, density impacts revenues. And then hold joint meetings to advise the order selectmen and FinCom. So I think we have this, we have this sort of in a slide and I would just like to put that up. Hold on a second. Is this too small or is this okay? Can you see this? So Sue helped prepare this slide with us for us. So tonight we kind of wanted to discuss, can you see my screen? Is this up there?
We can.
Okay.
Ron, we can see this was this is. Ron, we can see this. Was this in our folder?
No, this was, this was created today. It was not in our folder, but it's, it's, it sort of gives a step-by-step, what, what, what we wanted, what the laid-out scenario is. So tonight, the month of April, we want to discuss what do we want? And that's based on the spreadsheet input that we got, a feedback from Sue compiled. And then some members wanted to talk about it at the meeting tonight. So I think that's what we kind of want to do tonight. So with that in mind, the last, at our last meeting, the board was asked to provide feedback on these topics to form consensus and help streamline the discussions for tonight. My understanding from Sue is that the response has been from only three members. So with that in mind, I'd like to go over and get some consensus from the board on the three topics that we were asked to speak on, starting with uses.
Ron, this is Mary. Can I ask a overarching question?
Yes, Mary.
So I, I had emailed you, but I never got a response. I'm unclear if this is a request for Limited Commercial District or the Smart Growth Overlay District. The document that was sent out was labeled Smart Growth Overlay District for uses, and the agenda item is for LCD.
It's, to me, they're synonymous. They're the same area of land we're talking about.
So you're saying 40R and LCD is one in the same?
Well, the overlay district is the same as the 40R that we're going to be discussing.
So we're still in discussion as a 40R?
Yes. We're going to take the 40R framework and then decide if we want to close that up and then move forward on our own. If we want to, you know, get away from the 40R.
So are we voting on that now if we want to proceed as a 40R?
We could. That was, my thought was to, you know, if the board desires that they can vote tonight on that, or we can first determine uses based on the framework of the 40R and then go off in our own direction.
Well, my input on that would be that if we're, if we're discussing uses within a 40R context, I think we should vote on that first because obviously an overlay district or a bylaw change with special permit is going to be different than a 40R with uses.
Yeah, Sue, did you want to clarify that? Because I think you wanted to close out the 40R is what I'm understanding.
Yeah, so what, what I would like to do is I would like to, you can call it a 40R, or you can call it an overlay district, or you can simply think of it as the land. Everything except the Gordon property is what I would suggest at this point for these particular questions regarding uses, design standards, and regulations. So it, it would be, it could, if you're going about it as if whatever you want up there would be the same, regardless of whether it was a 40R or an overlay district of our own making, the only difference really that's mandated is a 40R requires you to have a certain density, and it requires housing by right. So if we answer these questions and kind of answer the questions about what do we want up there, what do we want it to, what uses do we want, what do we want it to look like, what density do we want? If we can answer those questions within the framework that we have, then they're not two separate things. We just don't go forward with the 40R. And I think at some point, there's a, whether it needs to be a formal vote or we can just accept that we don't think a 40R is the right tool at this moment. Either way, these questions will get us to the answers that we need for that side of the highway. Then the other question is, is do we want to? The other option, of course, is to just change the zoning, the underlying zoning. But you, but it's a different, it's a very different creation. But you can do that as well. That conversation would include both sides. But I think at this point, the most efficient way to get to what you want and think about in the, in the Limited Commercial District is to deal with the lands on the east side. That would be my recommendation.
So I would have to, this is Mary again, I would have to still throw out there the, the 40R, the items you listed out, Sue, but there's, you know, there's going to be age restriction with housing. It's tough to, if we're looking at items and saying, you know, do we want, pick anything, brewery. We either have to think of that in context of, all right, 51% is going to be housing, or we have to look at it in context. It could simply just be a brewery and no housing is involved. So we really have to determine what we're doing there before we can determine uses.
So that, that, your point is well taken regarding the balance of uses. I would suggest that we don't think of it in terms of a required 50% of housing, but think about whether you want housing there at all and what type of housing and under what conditions. So I think for this discussion, I think it will be most, most helpful if you're not trying to keep within that 50-50 split. So good point on that. I would, I wouldn't let that determine what uses that you would want there. Because I, like most people, probably feel pretty strongly that we're leaning towards not having a 40R. It's not predisposed, but I think we can read the tea leaves, so.
So we, we wanted to go through the land uses, of the uses up there. You know, again, we tried to expedite this, but again, we've only gotten three responses from members. So I don't know if we want to just go through the notes that people wrote, if we want to do these in blocks, or how we want to go through these. My suggestion is maybe we go through them individually quickly and then look at what other members have said and what their comments are. So with that in mind, I'll start with the assisted living facility as a possible use.
So I guess, Ron, I'll start this off. When we began this conversation, the idea was that assisted living would be the affordable component of this, and that has changed. And so for me, if it's anything more than the assisted living, I'm not okay with it at this point. So I am okay with assisted living, but that was always my understanding, that was the only housing that would be up there.
So you, you are a no for assisted living in that area?
No, I'm okay. But I think Mary's point that we need to say if this is a 40R or not, now that that assisted living will not meet the quota for the affordable, I'm not okay with additional housing. This is where I think that conversation is crucial. I was okay with it if it was the assisted living. I'm not okay with additional housing at this point. Doesn't mean that I couldn't be convinced of otherwise, but at this point, I am not okay.
Christine, can I verify? I think, I think, I miss, I think maybe what you meant to say is if housing was going to be part of the 40R requirement, not of the affordable housing, is that what you meant? If it was going to be part of the cap of the 40R, the required housing?
My understanding early on in the 40R conversations was that, yes, we needed this housing and that the affordable portion would be the assisted living. Really, all of the housing component was that what our understanding was.
Um, okay, I think, I think that might have been a misunderstanding.
Um, can I make a comment? Excuse me. Oh.
Uh, sure. So assisted living is, is very difficult to make it affordable because you're paying for meals and services and.
Oh, no, no. Chris, that wasn't the point. That's not the point. That we were told early on that that was going to be the affordable portion. I am not okay with the 40R with housing, additional housing. I'm not. That's, that's, that was my point.
Okay, well, so I'll make a second point then, which is often assisted living goes really well with independent senior housing scattered around it, which is a feeder for the assisted living. And those senior units could be, a part of them could be affordable, and that would be another way of getting affordability. And I'm not talking about hundreds of units. I'm talking about, you know, for an 80 unit of assisted living, you might have 10 or 15 clustered, single-family home, but I'm sorry, clustered single units, one or two bedroom units for seniors to live in. And then when they get old and need more services, they move into the assisted living. It's just part of a package. So, and I would be in support of that kind of a proposition.
Okay, and we haven't received comments from Mr. Russell on this?
Okay, yes. I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't get it in. I have it in front of me. So essentially, just to make it quick, I said yes to everything except for banks, single-family residential, unless it were part of a retirement community or assisted living facility. Corporate headquarters, maybe. I'm not sure because a corporate headquarters would have the, the potential to take over that entire piece, and then we wouldn't have the kind of diversity that we might want. And in terms of housing, I, I think it's a great place for some of our subsidized, big A affordable housing, as well as, more importantly, the so-called missing middle. So the diversity of units. I think one thing that's really important to think about is all the projects and ideas that have been met with big loud no's everywhere else. If you don't want it downtown, you don't want it in the village, you don't want it in the Hickory Hill or et cetera, then why not up here?
Ms. Foley, do you want to comment on assisted living or all, any of these? Well, let's start with assisted living.
Yeah, let's stay on topic. I did not fill this out, as I said in my email, that this document is titled Smart Growth Overlay District. And, but then the direction was to do it for LCD. So I didn't want to put my comments down on paper where it was, it was not clear. I'm okay with assisted living. I think that's something that the town needs. It needs to, but again, it, it's a yes as a single line item.
Mr. Coons, any comment on assisted living?
Yeah, I'd like to agree with the, the way Chris Olmey put it, with the assisted living and the small residential
Affordable.
Affordable housing, or, or even the aging homes around it.
Ron, I was a yes.
Okay, banks, we got three noes. I thought yes, but ATM. But any, again, Ms. Foley, Ms. Lucio, and Mr. Coons?
I think an ATM would be fine. A bank, no.
I don't think anyone's going to be using a bank anyway in the future.
Okay.
Yeah, no opinion, Ron.
Ron, we're not hearing you.
Okay, am I on mute? No. Okay. Moving to the brewery, you got two noes, two yeses, so kind of mixed.
I'm a no.
Ron, can you hear me?
Yes, Gary.
Um, two comments, one about the brewery. But first, I was going to suggest earlier, is there any way we can just have this conversation and not talk about the 40R as, as really a driver behind it? Let's just talk about this, the whole LCD with uses in general. It seems like we were getting hung up way too much on the requirements of the 40R, and we almost should take a straw poll if we're, if we, if we, if we are going away from the, the idea of a 40R and its inherent requirements, because it seems like we are. But certainly for this conversation, it's, I think it's a way, much more liberating to not be reflecting on that with regards to housing and uses. And as far as the, the, so let me know if that's possible. The other thing is the brewery, the reason I voted against it is because it's the kind of use, you, you don't want a big use like that that would compete with downtown. I think there's a consensus in town. That's not the kind of retail commercial establishment you want up there.
Ron, may, may I just?
Yes, Ms. Brown.
I just wanted to respond directly to Gary. Gary, I think the reason that it was put in there is because it's the type of business that many in the community has said that they would want, but it, there's not room for that size in the downtown. So therefore, it would be compatible with uses in the downtown, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be replacing them because you couldn't, you just can't have, well, I wouldn't say you couldn't, but it's unlikely to find a, a spot that you could have that use because of the size that's required. So I don't feel strongly whether you allow them or disallow them, but it was considered to be something that people wanted, but it was unlikely to be located downtown because just.
Just to be clear, just to be clear, Sue, is this a brewery to make booze, or is it a place to drink booze?
It would be, it is, it is the distilling of it, the making of it.
So it's just an industrial use?
Well, no, it could be, you could, often they, often they do both. So often, they are restaurants and bars that, you know, much like the one, the ones in Ipswich or Essex recently. They take up a big space. So while it's something that community members say, we like the idea of it, we like to have it, we know they're viable businesses. The craft industry, you know, is pretty booming, so. But it's not a use that's easy to fit into a downtown. That's why.
The industrial part would probably be okay. The retail establishment part would probably compete with the downtown.
That, that's a good thinking. At some point, would we be showing to the Chamber of Commerce the list of uses of those that we were not in favor of and those that we end up being in favor of? Are we going to be discussing this with them? That would be potentially very good to get their input.
Well, we, we're certainly thinking of having some, some experts come in and discuss the viability of the uses and the impacts and the revenue production of them, if that's what you're talking about. I don't think it's the chamber, which primarily is about marketing, but I think we can find experts in our community or close by that can kind of guide us or give us an input on it.
Well, general input from the town businesses. I'm not sure if there actually is such a precise group, but hypothetically speaking on their behalf and not really knowing how they feel.
Oh, so we, well, we had focus groups meeting with some of the downtown businesses. But yeah, definitely, all of this would come before the, you know, the public in general, including the downtown businesses. So I think it's, it's not a hard yes or a no. I think we're trying to get to what are, what's reasonable and what's desirable, and then it's iterative from there.
You know, I had some subsequent thought on this. I was wondering if this has an undue burden on the water or sewer supply with something like this. And I guess we, we should ask that question, if something like this would tax our infrastructure more than a lot, an industrial, another kind of industrial use.
I can't answer that question, but others I'm sure can.
So on the brewery idea, we're kind of tossed here. Mr. Coons, would, are you? Okay, so on the brewery idea, we're kind of tossed here. Um, Mr. Coons, would, are you yay or nay on this or any opinion on this?
I'm a, I'm a yay.
Ms. Foley, um, thoughts on this?
Yeah, let me, let me ask you one more clarifying question. Um, are we doing this as, as one offs, um, to putting aside that these would, could potentially all be as a right?
Well, that's another question, whether we put special permits off these or not.
I, are you asking whether it would be by a right or by special permit?
Well, I don't know what umbrella we're doing it under, if we're doing it under the overlay, a bylaw change, a forty R. So are we looking at these as just individual one offs that sure we like to see assisted living there or a brewery or whatever it may be, but, um, either there's still a special permit attached or there's still, um, some sort of zoning or planning board review because you know, just because at this point in time, there's maybe two or three main property owners up there, these, these lots can get parceled up, and if everything's by right, and let's use the brewery as an example, you know, we're potentially saying, oh, as a, as right, as by right, we could all, all of a sudden have four breweries there. So obviously in case, but you know, I I'm not understanding what context we're discussing this in.
Uh, we're not, we're not suggesting any, what, if, if or which of any of these are by rights. So I would just say in general, you know, would you think this is a viable use? At at this point, I would just think you know, by special permit, um, just so that you're not thinking that all of them can be by right and they can be the entire treatment. I think that I think you just want to kind of think about what you want the area to be like and would it include this? And not assume that it would be all of it.
Okay, so then, and then my last suggestion would be to take off the title of the document because it does still say smart growth overlay. But my answer would be no to brewery.
Looks like the brewery's out. Um, car sharing. Uh, some comments are hurt, smart car lot, uh, Chris only in a designated area, electric recharge stations. I asked about. Any thoughts on the car sharing? I'll start with Ms. Foley.
So yes, could something be clarified? Is this a lot of, of parked cars or what's the, what does this look like?
I'm afraid I can't answer what it would, what it would look like. I'm not and I don't, I would have to, I need to know more about this. And again, none of these do, we don't know specific, specifically what any of these would look like, how big they would be. All of that can be baked into the regulations. What we're trying to determine is, you know, is it a viable use? Is it a use that's should be considered for up here?
So is this list from people who just responded in general, the public, sort of suggesting?
I think it may be. M A P C, um, put in some of the uses, some of the uses were out of our, you know, out of the public forums. And, um, this one may have been something that was in other overlay districts. I don't recall, I remember a lot of talk about, um, transportation, but I don't remember, um, this as a specific use. So it may have been something that M A P C um, put in, um, to judge, to s- to see if it was something that we would be interested in allowing.
So Ron, my answer on that would be no. Um, this seems to be more of an, um, a city, uh, use. And it seems like it would be, at least all I can tell from the description, it would kind of be a parking lot of cars, and I don't think that's what we want up there.
Understood. Christina?
I feel the same way. I'm a no. And I think this goes in hand in hand with the residential neighborhood, which I do not think this should be at this point.
Okay. Yeah, we, we talked about that later. Um, uh, car sharing, Mr. Coons?
Uh, no, I'm against that.
Uh, farmer's market. Pretty much a no brainer.
I would love a farmer's market.
Yes.
Okay, this is silly. Don't we have a farmer's market?
Utopia, um.
Yeah.
No, that's not what a farmer's market is.
Well, what's?
Will it be competing? Mary Ann?
Is it a farm stand?
Now, a farmer's market will, is typically a, um.
In your own goods?
Ephemeral, right. And they happen once or twice or however many times a week.
Um, this would be, uh, these would be farmers bringing in their stuff for a sale, sort of like they do in Gloucester, um, on the Harbor Loop.
Yeah, many, yep.
Okay, so, um, in either case, it's a way to buy fresh goods and vegetables and, um, any comments, uh, Ms. Foley on the, uh, now new definition?
For the farmer's market?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, I was a yes.
I think we should also just make sure it doesn't compete with Utopia.
Excuse me, Ron, I have a comment on this.
Yes, Mr. Russell.
Um, it's, uh, just worth pointing out that many towns and cities don't even consider this as zoning use. It's more of, uh, an event that is permitted through um, through the town with other events. We have a special permit for that event to deal with whatever parking or sanitary issues there may be, um, because it is ephemeral.
Okay, maybe we don't even consider it, is what you're saying.
Uh, I I'm saying that it, it doesn't have to be a permitted zoning use for it to happen as an event, so it may be pointless. Um, it depends on, I think again, to, um, some of the other questions. If you look at a more permanent farmer's market, uh, building facility, then that is a zoning use, where it is a structure that's provided that vendors come in and out and there's, um, seating, there's restrooms, et cetera. You do see that in some places. I don't think our community, I don't think that's necessary or viable. Um, but I think that's the only time that you would want to zone it as a use. If it's just a, you know, a, a, a couple of afternoons or just through the summer, then it's just a special permit for the event.
Okay.
Um, I was thinking along the similar lines as Gary, that, um, nobody in our region has a structure that's associated with a, a periodic farmer's market.
Actually, that's not true, Gary. Salem has one.
Oh, oh, excuse me, sorry, Mr. Salem.
It's okay.
But I would just, add, let me just finish that. I think you'd want, if we're gonna permit it, the place to have it is where the overflow from those uses could be sympathetic to our town businesses. So we would probably want to have it closer to downtown if we're gonna allow it at all for the benefit of the businesses.
Can we, can we, can we put a comment, Ron, that says, um, uh, permitted, uh, ephemeral event to be permitted outside zoning?
Yes, for sure.
Okay. And on a grocery retail, looks like three of us said yes. Oh, no, uh, Chris, you said no, but, um, you did say, uh, convenience store, limited in size, Garry Gilbert. And I was thinking of a convenience store, so on grocery retail, maybe we change that to convenience store or uh, ma- maybe I should take the temperature of the rest of the members who haven't commented on a full-blown grocery retail store versus a convenience store or any other thoughts?
Ron, this is Mary. My thoughts would be a grocery store, uh, implies there's gonna be a lot of housing there, and I would say if anything, a small convenience store.
That's.
Um, Ron, this is Gary. Russell. Yeah, I think that just, um, if we move forward with this in our definitions, we just need to be clear that, um, groceries as an accessory product, not your primary business, something like that, so that it it seems like we're all in agreement that convenience store, um, might work, but a full-blown, like, a second competitor to Crosby's or something like that, um, probably not. And and that would be defined as the, uh, the primary business as being a foods seller.
Okay. Uh, Christina, any comments on?
Um, grocery store, something not to compete with Crosby's. Did I say grocery, convenience store?
So, and Lauren?
Yeah, yeah, and I'm in favor of convenience store.
I'll just change the name. Okay, and health fitness recreational, um, Chris said expanded MAC, um, four members have voted yes, um. Christina, Mary, Lauren, any no, any naysayers on this or?
Kind of have to vote yes, don't you?
It's already there, exactly.
So, um, when we get to Symboli, you'll see what he's, has in mind for a hotel. We have some of his answers, uh, later on the meeting, um. So, um, I said no to this unless it's like a small inn, uh, Chris only limited to a hundred rooms, um. Gary, uh, the Garry's are yes in favor of a hotel, um. I'll start with, uh, Mary, on the hotel or thoughts on, uh, hotel?
I would need to know the scale of it.
Right. Would you want, would you want to limit the scale on, you know, would you would you, would you have a scale in mind? Um, you know, I think Symboli's proposing two hundred rooms. Chris is looking at a hundred rooms. I'm saying a small inn, um, any thoughts on, uh?
I think a hundred rooms is.
B and B.
Hundred, no, a hundred rooms.
Good.
So who said a hundred rooms?
A hundred rooms.
A hundred rooms, okay.
Um, I, I didn't answer, so, um, I would, um, I would definitely put, uh, a limitation, and I don't know what that would be at this point.
Okay. Christina?
Oh. I didn't hear that from me. So for me, a hundred rooms doesn't look that much different than the SLV proposed project might look, so that's too big for me. So I would say fifty at the most.
So you're for smaller. You're like, with me. Okay. Uh, light industrial, um, my comment was we need to define the special permit, um. I said, Chris, you had the same thought, performance standards, um. Again, I'll ask the three who have not yet, uh, spoken on, uh, light industrials.
Yeah, I'll for that, Ron. Absolutely.
I'm okay with it. It's Christine.
Uh, this is Mary. I'm a yes, um, you are clarifying in here special permit, so I think, um.
Well, that was my comment. I mean, the board can, yeah, that would.
Right, so I, what I was gonna say is that I think we started this conversation with the assumption that all of these could be then potentially be special permit, so I just wanted to make that clear.
Uh, Chris, on the, uh, workspaces, uh, live workspaces.
Live workspace?
Live workspaces, um. Looks like we've got, uh, a majority of yes already, um. Chris mentioned with standards. Um, anybody against live workspaces?
This is Mary. Could you define?
Uh, yes, um, so, uh,
Yeah, so typi- typically a live workspace is space for craftspeople or artists where they can create their craft or item or, um, could be anything from performance to to, um, to items. It doesn't have to be related to art. It can be um, anything that you create on your own, and it combines the living space with the usually over, over or under or near, um, with the workspace.
So usually these types of things are converted loft space, converted in industrial buildings, things like that, correct?
That's a very common use for that type of buildings, but they also, you can also build them new. But that's, that's a great, um, a reuse of mill buildings is live workspace.
Right, so we're not talking reuse, we're talking building new. So it's essentially, it's housing. Have we, what's, what's the, what's the size, the space?
Uh, again, we don't, we haven't put any spaces on this. This is just as a, as an idea. Um, would you want to create spaces where people could create their own, um, whatever they're, whatever they're creating and have live space with it? It's, it's just kind of unique. For example, you couldn't, if someone had an apartment, they couldn't have a welding shop there. Um, they just don't go together. So these are opportunities to create specific type of live workspace.
Single bedroom?
Pardon me?
Single bedroom?
Yeah, I, I haven't put, we haven't, there aren't any parameters on them. And again, I think we're just kind of voting on an idea and, and going from there.
All right, so I won't vote until there's parameters put on.
I think this is an example of, um, we're talking, trying to talk about uses, I thought, and how we'll regulate them, what the zoning bylaw restrictions would be, whether it's special permit or not, whether it's a one or two bedroom live-in unit, that's like a secondary regulation conversation, it seems to me. Um, and and these, these spaces are, uh, this is just allowing someone to do some sort of, uh, light industrial, you could call it, or artwork in a residence. You could regulate it later and not allow them to do direct sales out of their place, but they could do their work there. There's a lot of ways you could regulate it, including the number of bedrooms or the size of it. I think it's, the question's more the use purely, and let's try to keep, uh, regulation discussions for second conversation, it seems to me.
Christina, I have a thought on the live and workspace.
Um, so I'm a no.
Okay.
And because I don't, I don't envision this as a neighborhood. It's just not how I see it. I do see it as a vibrant place to generate revenue. I just don't see its best use as residential at this point.
Okay. Uh, Lauren?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure on that one, too. I'm not sure yet. I'm gonna pass.
All right, uh, let's try to get through some of these, uh, more quickly, medical office municipal, um.
It's already there. We're gonna have to say yes.
Correct. Office space, so, uh.
Could you define the municipal piece on that?
Yeah, Chris had the same.
I think that was put in there to cover things such as a, um, a senior center, that type of thing.
For a medical office?
No, uh, you asked, I, you asked about a municipal.
Well, it says medic- medical office municipal.
It shouldn't say municipal. Let's change it to just medical office.
Thanks, Ron. That sounds good.
Um, office, um, my comment was to define the size, but again, we're, we're not talking about parameters now, I guess, um, we're just, the concept of having office, office space up there. I know we talked about it last meeting, but, uh, you know, people are moving away from office space, but anyway, just the thought of having, uh, allowing offices up there. Looks like we have four yeses so far.
Ron, uh, there, there is, you consider the one next door part of that or, uh, I mean, I'm for it, but there is, there is some there. There is, there is some there.
There are offices up there now?
Well, yeah, the major system medical.
Okay. And Christina or Mary, any, any thoughts on the, on an office space? I think that'll generate income.
Personally, I don't think, once going back to an office, but I'm not, it's not offensive to me. I'm sorry, Mary, if I cut you off there. Oh, did, Ron, did you speak? I can, I'm having trouble hearing you. I, I was a yes.
Okay. Okay, personal services. So Chris said this is basically the same as. Medical offices. Sue, is that correct, pretty much? This would be.
I think they could easily be grouped together.
Tattoo parlor or a manicure?
I think often, often they're a similar type space, so a chiropractor or, you know. Could be under medical, you could also consider it under personal, I think. But I think this was more targeting. Hair salons, nail salons, other type of services.
Thoughts on that?
I'm all for that, Ron.
Mary?
Yes.
Pet grooming, pet services, retail boarding, I think we have that up there already, right? Doggy daycare?
Yes, you do. You, you only have the, you only have the play area, so this is talking about. A little more.
I'm okay with all, I think we might need to talk about boarding, that's gonna create some noise.
Or Lauren on the doggy day, on the pet services?
Absolutely. Hey goats?
A research and, and development. Chris again thought this was the same as light industrial, which I agree, and we need standards, which we aren't talking about tonight, but. Just the idea of research R and D up in the, in that area.
Yes.
I'll go with that, Ron.
Okay.
Me too.
Residential singles, so we have two nos, two yeses.
I'm a no.
I'm a no.
No. No. Residential multifamily. And Chris said in conjunction with assisted living, that he's already mentioned, and we have four yeses so far, so. Can we quickly answer this, multi?
Yeah, I, I'm in favor of that with conjunction with the system of.
I don't want it to be confused, so I'm, I'm gonna say no, because I think my view already is with assisted living, that's multifamily, that's it. I do not want residential multifamily unless it's with assisted living, so I wanna know.
Oh, and Ms. Folly?
So my thoughts on this, if we are saying something is in conjunction with assisted living, then we should. Have an item that says staged living community, so that's assisted living, that's. People that own their own residences, and then it can be memory care, so. It's, it's too convoluted to say assisted living, and then multifamily dwellings that might be with assisted living. So, to be clear, I will go with a no for the multifamily dwellings. If we wanted a different line item. That encompasses those two or three items, I would look at that.
I will add that, Mary, to the bottom. Multifamily. In coordination.
Well, I would call it a staged living community.
Okay, even better. Okay, we'll get to that. Radio station, three yes.
Could I add a comment about multifamily for a second?
Yes, Gary.
And also, can you try to do something with your microphone, because you, half of everything you say is half volume. But. Okay. It's been said repeatedly by Christine, she's against housing there, and I don't think it should be a black or white thing. Potentially, we don't want any housing up there, but from my viewpoint, if we have some housing, we don't want to isolate, I've said this at previous meetings. We don't want to have assisted living all by itself. The developer may not even want to build it if it's isolated in a, in an office, an exercise park area, depending how this gets developed. I think these uses, we should consider them and just leave it up in the air for final decisions. Multifamily, we need some apartments in town. Nowhere in town is anybody gonna let you build an apartment close to downtown, or in any of the neighborhoods, very likely. And apartments provide almost de facto cheaper housing, the missing middle kind of housing opportunity. I wouldn't necessarily want to see only apartments by itself, period, and no other housing. That might not necessarily be a good idea. But it should be on the table, as, as many of these housing use types should be. Considered, keeping in mind that we may or may not want them, depending how the whole mix of use comes together. I hope that makes sense.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, radio, TV, studio. Any comments from the ladies or Mr. Coons?
Yeah, that works.
Okay. Christina?
Honestly, I don't think we have a need for it. I don't think Manchester needs a TV or radio station. I'm a no.
Okay. And Mary?
My question on these last four items, we had a presentation from the town planner at our last meeting. That went up to kind of residential multifamily dwellings, and then, and then these four were added, or, or three or four were added. I'm wondering where they came from.
They may have been added, they may have been added from a list of, a larger list that was identified in the. It for possible use in the LCD. I can't actually see them, which ones they are, so. We could.
So what was added was radio, TV, studio, theater, assembly, crafts, manufacturing, and corporate headquarters.
I think they might have, they might have either come out of the, it was, when I looked at them. When I looked at all the three lists that we had last time, either from the master plan, from the LCD comprehensive list that was created. And the forty R, I put them all together, so it made, it was one that was obviously missing from the LCD or the. The forty R hadn't captured them, but they were hanging out there, so I put them in. So my, my best guess is that they might have been from the comprehensive list that was developed by, you know, possible uses in the LCD. If you recall, we went through kind of what are all the uses that we might consider. I think that might have, this may have been where those came from.
Okay, thanks. I'm a no.
And I would think maybe we just more broadly think of it and maybe label it as multimedia. I, I don't think it's, I don't think what maybe necessarily is imagining is a, is a radio or television, but it could be multimedia. Associated with the movie industry, for example, or public broadcasting or whatever, so. And I'm, again, I'm not married to any of these uses, but it's just, if, if that's helpful to think of it that way.
Theater assembly, two nos, two yeses. This is a movie house or a. Well, theater.
Concert hall, any of those.
Things, right.
And we have had people approach us for land for that purpose, FYI.
Yeah, I'm for that.
And Mary or Christina, for a theater?
I just don't think it is a good match with Manchester, in my opinion. I don't, I think we could do better.
Okay, Mary, on us, you're no? Crafts manufacturing. I was thinking this is painting studio, jewelry. So I was thinking that would be perfect fine for me. Mary, Christina, Lauren, we have four yeses so far.
I'm good with it.
So I guess when we're thinking about these ideas, I mean, I don't think of Manchester as an artsy town. I think of it as a beach-going, hangout downtown. I mean, are we trying to reinvent ourselves? Because if we are, then maybe, but I personally don't. See the need. I think we have lots of other surrounding communities that fill this niche. I don't. I don't think we need to, I don't think that needs to be asked.
And Ma- Mary?
So do we know the, the, the size of this? I mean, I, when you say painting studio, jewelry, that seems quite small, but I'm, it could be a large. Craft manufacturing, so I'm trying to understand the scale.
Yeah, well, I guess we can determine the scale, and you can make the comment that this is, you know, that it's, you know, a single. You know, twenty by twenty room. You know, we can, you can define that. I can put it in as a comment.
I would say it may be. Relevant to scale.
Okay. But are you, are you, are you opposed to the idea at all?
I was gonna ask Sue, how is this any different than an office space? Someone wants to rent a room, a space to paint in, so be it.
I think the size of the space isn't that different. I think it's just wonder, again, thinking broadly about what type. Some people think of this area as a, as a neighborhood, a district, an opportunity to create some synergy between uses. Other people see it as a business park. I think we're kind of getting to that by identifying the uses that we think would be. A welcome fit. I think that's the best I can, the best way I can answer that, because we don't know dimensions. This is just all. About uses at this point and not about the size. I mean, a lot of the uses that we said yes to are quite large. And yet, some people wanted to say no to a hotel only if it was fifty stories. There's a disconnect to me between. Between that, and I'm not sure what it's based on, so I think just imagine what.
Character.
The district might be, and if you have one, and, and I'm not saying one is wrong and one is right. I think it's based on what you think. We should be creating in this area of town.
It would be really helpful in this conversation to, to link to each of these uses, how much land they would typically chew up, like. Mr. Symboli mentions thirty thousand square feet of commercial space. That's not actually a huge amount of space. A hundred and twenty thousand would be a lot more. I mean, to link it to the amount of acreage it would chew up, the, and to have a low, medium, or high. Tax generation number, not, nothing specific, but like a hotel is a very high tax generating number with low impact. On resources. Some of those, some of those criteria would be helpful as we're deciding whether we want to see the use or not.
Yeah, but that, that starts to get to master planning it, and we can't, we can't master plan it, as Chris only pointed out. We can only allow uses and go from there, so.
But some uses are juicier than others, is all I'm saying. Yeah, that's my point.
So I would like to jump in at this point. That was the exact point of the study, but everyone voted that down, so let's. Not think that's important. That was the.
I'm talking approximate numbers, but we could do it in the second go around.
Well, I think the FinCom should do it. I don't think we should be doing it. I think Ginny should be doing it. It's not our job to predict that.
So Ron, to finish my comments on the crafting, I, I think to, to call it crafts manufacturing makes it. Appear to be a, a larger industrial building, so if it's a craft shop, it's a craft studio. That would assume a different scale.
That better? I, I think we kind of get the idea. Alright. So you would vote in favor of that, Mary, if it was a smaller scale?
Well, yeah, so again, if you're, if your attempt is to see the, how I would vote for a craft shop slash. Studio, I would take out manufacturing, but if it's still manufacturing, it would be relevant to scale.
Yeah, I, I, I'm in favor of taking out manufacturing. Is the rest of the board okay with that, or comfortable with just making it kind of craft shop? Studio? As a use?
Yeah, sure, good idea.
Good idea. Alright, corporate headquarters. We got two maybes, a no, and then okay, so. Talk about that a little bit. Chris, you're asking for performance standards on this, meaning are you talking about size? I guess you do say size, yeah.
Yeah, you know, if, if Amazon put it came in and did a distribution center there, I think that'd be very good, but. That's not exactly a headquarters either.
Right.
You know, I, you know, this may be a moot point anyway, because I don't think corporations are gonna be building too many more headquarters.
So this is another use that has been brought to us, or at least inquiries.
But not recently.
Well, I think there's some money in town. Isn't there somebody in town that maybe wants to relocate here, that already lives here? I don't know. Is that the thought? Anyway.
Why not? Why not have them stay in town?
Great. Yeah, any thoughts from any of the board on this corporate headquarters? Christina, Mary?
I don't know, it just seems like I'm left out of this conversation. Seems like everyone knows about some corporate headquarters that wants to go, so. If you're gonna discuss that, maybe you should tell everyone.
No, I thought I had heard that, or maybe it was a rumor someone, some neighbor told me or something.
Well.
I don't know, I don't, I don't know anything firsthand. But I heard a rumor.
Kristen and Sue seem to.
I don't know, I don't know any.
I, I just want to clarify that sometimes when people come to me, they ask me to, to not to broadcast. Their inquiries and their intents, so I try to. Share in a discreet kind of way the type of interest that people have in the town. I can certainly see why people don't want to, to share what they, what their thoughts are, because it's often not well received. So Christine, it's, it's a little bit insulting that you're, you're positioning me as keeping secrets when. When my job is to be discreet in certain cases.
Well, I'm just asking that you share with the rest of the board. That seems like you shared with some. That's all. It's not insulting.
I've just shared it. I've just shared that with you all. I have not spoken to anyone otherwise.
Well, conversations seem to be otherwise.
Well, I think there's still a need.
Again, your accusations are not appreciated, and they're hostile, and you should recognize that they are.
It's not hostile. Chris responded to your comment, and it appeared that you had had a conversation. All I'm saying is if you had a conversation with Chris, you should share that information with the rest of the board. That's it.
I just told you that I did not have a conversation, and you should accept it as that.
I've never discussed this with Sue Brown.
Then we are finished with the conversation, and we can move on.
But Christine, it's not the first time you've accused people of doing stuff behind your backs, like we all need to report to you all the time, every conversation we've had. It's really tiring.
I just asked to share with the rest of the board, that's it.
People are trying to do the right thing here. They're trying to get. People are trying to do the right thing here. They're trying to get some work done also.
Did you ask that anyway, Gary? The conversation was going on. Ron brought it up, Chris brought it up, Sue brought it up. All I asked to be brought into the conversation. It's very simple. Nothing was behind my back. I asked to be brought into the conversation. That's it.
Well, the conversation is about whether we want to allow corporate headquarters as a use. That's the point. Let's stick to the point. Yes or no, Christina? Do you want to allow Chris corporate headquarters as a use?
Um, maybe.
Mary?
Is this corporate headquarters office space or is it something, you know, else, you know, corporate headquarters for a processing center or some such thing? So I, I need to know if it's office space or not.
Would assume it's office space.
Then why are we distinguishing it?
I think, again, this was one of the ones that was brought up as something outside of what was already in the forty R.
Mary, if you want to make a comment and say yes, as long as it's office space, then make the comment. Otherwise, I'll just leave it blank, uh, you know. You can, you can make a comment and say, yes, I vote yes, as long as it's office space, or I vote no, I don't want it at all. We're just trying to get consensus on uses. Uh, I mean, I don't know why this is so pains, painful and why this wasn't done in advance. And that, you know, we're here now at eight thirty and still going through the uses. We haven't even gotten to this other stuff. So, uh, I'm just at a loss. So, Ma- Mary, did you want to make a comment or a, a, um, a, a, on, on, on office space, whether it's, uh, manufacturing office space or, uh, office on corporate headquarters? You want to put in words?
I do, Ron. Somebody else spoke right after I was speaking, so I paused. My comment was, I was trying to clarify if this was office space. I would be a yes if it's corporate headquarters office space.
Thank you. Lauren?
Yeah, for it.
Indoor back rack boat storage. I don't know where this came from, but, um, we've got three nos, one yes. Uh, Ms. Foley?
I would be a no.
Okay. Christina?
No.
Okay. And Lauren?
Uh, I, I'd be for it, depending on the size.
Okay. All right, so that took, takes care of the uses. I added, uh, senior center as an additional comment. Uh, but I think we've captured that, Sue, in the, um, uh, above, where was that now? Um, in this residential multifamily dwelling.
Sorry, what were you trying to?
The, the senior center, there was, uh, I, I just added that as a possibility, but I think it was captured above in the, uh.
Or you could call it a municipal use if you want, and it would capture more things.
Okay.
Oddly, I don't think one of the things that was suggested by Mr. Symboli even made the list, which was a daycare.
Okay.
Unless that was educational, I'm not sure.
Well, I, I, I would look, um, I would look for other suggestions, any, any other uses the board has, getting away from the framework of what we have here, um.
So I, I have a couple of comments about this, just looking at the overall responses here, the pattern of responses.
Yeah.
Seems as if we're sort of, we can't decide whether this should be an office park with assisted living, maybe? Or are we talking about some kind of a diverse neighborhood of mixed uses? And I think we should try to come to at least a consensus about that. Because as everyone has said, some of these uses depend on what the other uses are. You know, you're not gonna have a, an office park with multifamily housing in it. And you're not gonna have a diverse neighborhood if the three quarters of it is, uh, corporate headquarters. So I think we need to sort of think, I don't think we can decide tonight necessarily, but I think we should be thinking about what our vision for this area is. Looking at the forest, the trees.
Yep, point well taken, um. It, it looks like there's a lot of consensus on a lot of these, um. Uh, maybe what, what, what we should do, Sue, is pull out the ones that have a really, uh, there's no, uh, issues about. And then kind of see where that falls into, and then maybe we should get together, like Chris says, next meeting and, uh, kind of shape that into what we want to see, based on these answers.
I think that's a good idea and I think that, um, there's a couple of ways to think about. I think you can think of it as just one or just the other, or you can think of it as one in one development and something else on another, um, so.
You talking about two overlays or?
No, I'm not talking about two overlays. I'm talking about options within an overlay.
Okay.
Much like, much like the framework of the forty R said, you could come in with a development that is either a mixed use or a single use and, um, and then the important piece would, how do they fit together? Or how do, how do they, how are they appropriately separated? So, um, I do think it's a good conversation to have about the overall vision of what could be up here. I, I, and I know that's iterative and I, but I think it is a good idea. Um, Christina has, you know, been very, um, forthright with what she believes it is or it, it isn't. So I think it's a, I think it's a good conversation to start.
So we are, are we in agreement to do that, to, to further hone this next meeting on this, on the uses, on what we want to see up there? So I can, uh, you know, kind of memorialize this in the agenda. Have a working session on that. I'll try to, I'll try to cull out all the ones that are no's. Um, maybe we should group them, uh, well, it's like this, between living, residential and, uh, industrial.
Ron, I'm happy to do that work.
Okay, is, is that, is that, is the board comfortable going forward with that?
You bet.
Silence, okay.
That was on mute, that's fine.
Okay. Um, all right, so, uh, got a lot, we got some more to go through. So, uh, the next one were, um, only two on regulations. Um, and I guess Gary, you had some, uh, questions on what low impact meant and you voted no. Was that you that said no? Yeah, on, um, a project must contain either commercial slash mixed use area, a low impact residential area, or a combination of the two. So I guess, um, Sue, this is kind of what, uh, we, we just talked about, uh, for discussion next time.
Yeah, it is a little bit, and this, this was specific language to the forty R and if people just don't want to, um, do that, that's, that's fine. We can kind of punt on this one, but if people feel, but if you want to discuss it, that's all right too.
Yeah, I'll throw that open to the board if we want to punt it till next time or discuss it now or take it off.
I think we should punt it and what I'd like to do maybe is go through Symboli's response to your letter, Ron, and maybe that'll help set the context for the, what we do next week or next meeting.
Okay.
This is Mary. I agree, um, punting it, uh, but I think we still have to understand what umbrella we're doing this under. I, I mean, I think we're, um, I understand with the uses and what's potential, but if we're gonna constantly go back and forth, housing, um, commercial housing, commercial, you know, defined, it must be commercial mixed use, all this kind of stuff. We're just, we just keep mixing it up and we're not being clear and I'm sure anybody listening, it's not clear.
Yeah. Yeah, just trying to get consensus, so we are clear and, uh, that's correct. So we'll, we'll punt this to next meeting and, uh, try to define, um, this better. I'll try to do a better job on defining this.
Ron, are you just, are you just talking about punting the first use about what, what a project must contain?
Yes, that's correct. Okay, the next regulation was, um, and this is, I guess, from the older proposal. All projects with at least thirteen residential units require at least twenty percent affordable. I think we can be, uh, in agreement with that, whether than the, um, where thirteen came from, I don't know, um. Um, but I think we, we want affordable, i- if we do decide to go with, um, residential anywhere up there, we would want to have designate some affordable units, um. Do we want to specify, um, you know, these numbers? I don't know, um. Uh, I'll, I'll, it, it looks like three of us have said, yes, this should, this should be the way. Um, I'll ask, uh, um, Mary, Christina, Lauren, a weigh in on, on having affordable houses, units, if we do go residential up in that area?
I'm not sure, Ron.
Okay.
Um, this is Mary. My response would be, again, it's, it's not out of context, but it just doesn't, uh, it's, um, I think, you know, any project above a certain amount of units should have affordable, but now we're back talking about housing slash forty R, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Ron, I think you, pardon me, Mary. I think this one is easy enough to say, if there is housing there, would you want it to be? Would you want some set aside as affordable, whether the number is thirteen or whether you want a lower or higher threshold? I think that's all kind of the feedback that we need at this point is whether any housing should, should have a certain set aside as affordable and it should, should it be, you know, you can use thirteen, you can use ten. Our inclusionary zoning currently uses six. Um, I think that's just the, that's the kind of feedback we need. We don't have to land on a one now that can come later, but just in general.
Again, refraining for tonight.
Um, I'd like to weigh in on this, the, um, if we, if we're going to allow housing up there, I think the whole town has learned, we probably want to target at least ten percent of it to be affordable because of, of the rules and regs the state has, so we can keep up with things. But I think the, the bigger conversation is, um, uh, whether, whether we would want, what kind of AMI we would want to target for. And I, I certainly am much more in favor of a sixty percent AMI, which gets closer to actual affordable than this eighty percent number, which we all feel is a little bit, I think we all feel, is somewhat, um, almost ludicrous. I wish the state had revised their forty B law, but they never have. Um, it would certainly seem ten percent is a number that's pretty important if we're gonna be allowing housing up there.
Okay, again, not talking particulars, but I guess the question, and I, and I agree with Sue, is do we want affordable units if we do go with housing up there? And I've gotten, I guess Gary, Russell has left the meeting. But, um, we're up to Christina, uh, any comments on that?
I think people know my feelings about housing up there, so I'm not gonna weigh in tonight.
Okay. Undimensional, um, uh, are we comfortable with a thirty-eight foot, uh, height in that area, which would, uh, which, um, translates to three floors? Um.
So Ron, this is Mary. My comments on that is, I, again, it, it's, it's lack of clarity is, um, you know, our current bylaw is, I, if it's thirty-five feet or whatever it is and two and a half floors, whichever is, is less. Is this thirty-eight feet or three floors, whichever is less? You could have three, four floors that equal forty-five feet. I mean, I'm not, there's no clarity here.
Yeah.
The draft as written says thirty-eight feet. It doesn't say, it doesn't say how many floors. It says thirty-eight feet. I would suggest that it would be higher to allow three floors that don't have to be at twelve feet. But that's just, that's my recommendation, that it would be higher or higher by, um, by a particular use. So those are all things to consider. This is just a starting point, a starting number. I think when M A P C was putting this together, they were trying to be conscious that, um, the community is very aware of, and maybe a little bit, um, um, wants to be careful about the height of buildings. So I think this was a conservative starting point. I think environmentally, you're better to allow more height so that you can disturb less space and get the same
Yeah, I agree with that.
Size of building.
So Lauren, you're a yes on the height. Um, Christina or Mary, you gonna weigh in on this or pass or no? Or?
Um, I, go ahead. Go ahead, Mary. Oh, I, I guess I was just gonna say, I mean, I could potentially say yes to thirty-eight feet. I don't know what the thirty-eight feet slash three floors is, so, I mean, a minor point, but I, I don't really know what we're, what we're kind of saying with it. So, I mean, three floors can be high, so I'd say thirty-eight.
Okay, so you would be okay with thirty-eight feet?
Correct.
Christina?
Um, at three stories throughout the whole place? I don't know. It might, it might, um, maybe.
Okay, um, no lot area or frontage requirement?
I'm gonna.
Okay, that was you, Mary?
Yeah. And Christina?
Okay. Lauren?
Yep.
Yes, you're a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, minimum front setback fifteen feet. Gary Gilbert depends on which part of the site. Uh, it looks like we got a no and a yes.
This is gonna be too dependent on the space. Fifteen feet off of School Street is not enough.
So Ron, I think it's reasonable when, when it, it comes to things like that, that, um, you allow flexibility. So, um, it, the regulations can be written such that, um, that the permit granting authority has the right to allow differences there. So again, this is given a general flavor and I think it's perfectly valued, valued, valid to say, um, it's dependent on the circumstances and, um. So I don't think we have to get to a hard and fast thirty-five feet or fifteen feet or something different. I think if flexibility is the key, if people believe flexibility is the key because it's dependent on many things, I think that's perfectly valid feedback.
Okay. So we, we won't ask for feedback. We just would say flexibility.
Unless people feel strongly the other way, but that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, no, it sounds like that's what I'm hearing. All right, um, minimum open space. Minimum open space preserved 25%. We've got two yeses. Any objections to open space?
Would this be for every parcel that's developed in the OCD or just overall?
That's a good question. Chris, so in the framework of the 40R, there was a, there is a requirement, there was an overall requirement for the entire and then for each one as well. So each one had to have a certain, let me, and let me just pull my own up and see if I can see which one this is referring to. Whoops. Sorry. Oh, I, I didn't capture the whole thing. I just said, so I think minimum open space. So this is referring to each, each development parcel.
So if we did that, that would require lots of little scattered open spaces for every development that happens there.
It could unless you require them to be on the exterior of a site or abutting something else. Yeah, there's all kinds of ways to, to slice this one and maybe it's more helpful to think about it. Yeah, well, this is the framework. So feel free to say whether it's too much or not enough, or whether, again, this is one of those things that depends on the site and whether it backs up to woods and whether you would prefer it to, in a certain area. And if you want to, or again, if you, if this is something that you would want to leave to the discretion. So therefore you would put in the intent of it, but leave it to the discretion of the, the board because certain circumstances would warrant more and certain circumstances might warrant less.
Well, why don't, do we need to put a number on it and that we should? Well.
We do, we do, we do not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree with Chris.
Let's hold up on this until we reach consensus on the rest of it.
Well, I, I agree with Chris on some of these smaller, you know, lots. I don't know.
Sure, it could, you could, you could use it for a certain lot sizes. You could certain
Yeah, okay.
For uses that are adjacent to other uses. There's, there's many ways that you could craft a regulation that would would present as the intent is to, you know, to preserve existing open space or conservation land or vegetation or wetland resources. There's many ways that you could craft this. So again, you may want to wait until after you've kind of decided what you want here.
Okay. And I would say the same is true with the open space usable.
Yes. And, and of course, that was getting at the usable meant something that could be, for example, open to the public, like a public park or, you know, a seating area, expanded seating area or something. So a plaza. It was getting at placemaking, try to, try to make a place that where you wanted to be. So.
Does that, does that exclude, does that exclude a parking lot?
It would not include a parking lot.
Okay.
So it was, it's meant to get at, you can't say the usable open spaces is the area set aside for your ground what, like if you had a retaining pond or something, you can't count that as open space. This was just meant to, to encourage and set the standard or set the expectation that we're making a place where we want people to, to be able to linger and use as open space.
All right. Regarding the buffer, we have three no's. Actually, 50 is enough. Someone said 150 is better. So I don't think we have consensus on this. Any other comments on this buffer between streams and wetlands? I think maybe we should refer this to Concom for a, a comment, Sue, or?
Or, or it could just be to use the standards of the Wetlands Act.
Okay, that's a good idea.
And that's.
Ron, this is Mary. That was, that was gonna be my comment, that this should come from Concom. And that's where it's important to know the, the environmental situation up there for each.
Yeah, I, I. Yeah, I agree with that.
We can't make a blanket statement on this one.
Right. I agree. So this is what I'd like to do. I'd like to stop right here. Several members have dropped off. I think these discussions are important. And, and the hour is late. I think we'll pick it up with other design standards at our next meeting. If people are comfortable with that or unless they want to go through that, but I don't have a full board now. I think two have dropped out. Is that okay with the board?
Sure.
Sounds good.
I'll go with that, Ron.
Okay. Um, can, can I just quickly go through just some, some news items? We did get responses from Symboli on to the questions we asked. You know, some of them were definitive. Some of them were, you know, not really answers in, from my perspective, but I think the big takeaway is that he's going to get some help, you know, for what he sees there for uses and things. Sue, any, any thoughts on the, on the Symboli, on the Symboli responses?
Yeah. I think, I think the big takeaway is that the answer was, yes, he anticipates, as we move further along in the process, that he anticipates getting operators and others to help determine the size needs and of, of, of the facilities that he's not typically, that he doesn't typically run. And also just that it's an iterative process and that, you know, he's welcome to go back and forth. There's a lot of information he rightly can't know yet, but that he's open to sharing what he's thinking. And I would expect that he is working on a, another version to bring back to you. And again, I think it will come with its own set of questions and he's just open to respond. So I take it as a positive piece of work and good questions. And I think it helps him to continue thinking about what he wants to do and what the, the town is expecting from that or what we would like to see there. So I think it's a good step in a, like I said, in an iterative process.
Has this been shared with the Board of Selectmen? These answers?
No.
Okay.
Although I'm happy to do so and they're, they'll be on the public site at this point. So that's perfectly fine, but I'm happy to send them directly to them.
Okay. Thank you, Sue. And so the next item I have is the planners' report, Sue, and I did not, I did not put that out as a document to put online. I'll have to go fetch it. But did you want to go through the planners' report?
I got it, Ron.
You've got it? No, I was, I meant to, I'm putting it on the screen. Hold on, let me see if I can.
Sue was on mute.
Thank you, Mary. I had something in front of me. I couldn't see. So the first one is just in the, Affordable Housing Trust is their pro- property, their project, and just noting that the consultant is finalizing that report. And in the meantime, the Affordable Housing Trust is getting to work on the, some outreach and starting first with the residents.
So Sue, I, I asked at a, at a prior meeting, and I guess I'm still wondering when this project is going to come in front of the planning board, since that is town land?
Am I on mute or can you hear me?
We can hear you now, Sue.
Okay, sorry. So this will, we're waiting for the report to come out so that when questions come up, we'll have the full answer. So we expect that would be within, like I, I really expected that it will be before the end of the month. And then we would do that.
That you're coming, that they're coming in front of the planning board because it says presenting to the select board?
Well, one of the, yeah, one of the major considerations. So this has already generally been this not specific project, but the idea has been in front of the planning board because it's in the master plan. So the next step that we wanted to take is kind of get a, a better sense from the Board of Selectmen, FinCom about how they view the DPW site and its capacity to be a part of this project. So until we have a little more clarity on that, it's, that will answer a lot more questions of us. But, so we're teed up as soon as the, the, the draft gets in. And Chris, tell me if I'm, if you feel differently, but we're ready to, to bring it around to all the boards and committees as soon as we kind of get to that final draft.
So I don't know if Chris is answering, but of, of course, this is in the master plan and, but that doesn't mean that it, it doesn't come in front of the planning board for town land use. So I think what I hear you saying is it'll be presented to the planning board, you said, by the end of the month?
I said, I think. Yeah, as soon as we get our draft report, which I expect that, I, I expect that to be by the end of the month.
Yeah, Mary, this isn't going to happen quickly. Complicated project.
No, I know. And I'm, I'm, I've lis- listened in on a couple of their calls and I'm, I'm very interested to hear. I just, I, I just seem to keep missing that piece that it's town owned land and where the planning board. And I don't know if this project is actually in the master plan. I think you know, moving the DPW site was in the master plan. So I'm just try, trying to figure out where the planning board fits in this process.
So the planning board is going to have to, to act on this along with a bunch of other boards too. It's just gonna, but it's not going to happen next month. So, so, you know, it's just going to take a long time to get all this together, to meet with the neighbors, to, you know, there's a lot of, lot of background work that has to get done before formal presentations get made.
Yeah, but so Chris, I mean, so at the stage of meeting with the neighbors, isn't, so it, it seems like this, this is project keeps going down the road and it hasn't been vetted with the planning board in the sense that do we feel that this is the best use, potential use of a $3 million piece of land that the town owns? So, and I'm not saying, you know, one way or the other, but I'm just trying to determine where that step is.
Well, it's not this month. That, that much I can tell you.
So I just, it's just curious to me that it would already be presented to neighbors, yet we don't even know if it makes sense.
Well, we don't even know how many units we're talking about and whether they're senior restricted or whether they're, you know, for families, whether they're affordable or they're market rate, are they a combination? We don't know yet. It's, so we make a presentation to the planning board, it'll be so vague that you'll say, well, that's interesting, but we can't decide anything. So why waste our time?
Well, but it should be vague because we're not discussing, the planning board wouldn't per se be discussing the details. We would just be discussing the use of the town land.
So I would just say that, so the planning board has been aware of this project since its inception. And I would think that every time that it's brought up as an opportunity to weigh in, we certainly haven't heard anyone suggest that this isn't, this is inappropriate project. So I think we're going forward on that basis and the fact that it is in the master plan and the community in the master planning process says that the, the best use for that land is housing. So it, it, it sounds like that there's, I mean, we know that all public land is, the planning board provides their recommendation on it. So we know that that is part of the process. But there's many people that will weigh in on this and we're, we're really trying to get the, as many specifics to share as we can, but the most people who would be most affected by it, by the residents. So we're trying to do that outreach in a very general way first to make sure that they don't feel like they're hearing things, rumors that they're going to be moved out. So.
Yeah, so I think it's, it's a lack of, of, of process here is what we're coming up against that, you know, to say that it's in the master plan and that we have known about it doesn't mean we discuss it as a board and either vote or discuss the pros and the cons. So that's the piece that I'm trying to determine when that happens. And I've raised it a number of times and I'm just trying to get, again, where is the, the town steps that comes in front of the planning board?
After we've completed the project. Sorry, Chris, go ahead.
After you've completed the project?
After we've completed the, after we have a complete draft of the report.
Okay, so. Okay, so is there, is there a project plan posted for this or is it's? Is it just?
Yes.
Okay, so is that out on their site, Chris?
It's on, yeah, it's on the Affordable Housing Trust website, yes.
Okay, so that, there must be a, a step in there for the planning board, right?
Mary, your, your accusation, you're, you're trying to paint this as that there's no consideration of the planning board. And again, I, I have to object to your categorizing every project that doesn't come to you first as somehow not having the right process. So I'm sorry if I'm getting a little bit annoyed here, but.
Well, again, you are kind of accusing me of something. I am merely trying as a planning board member that I, you know, our, our main responsibilities are land use studies and determining use of town land. And I'm.
It's advising on the use of town land.
I'm sorry?
Your advisory. There's nothing to say. You have to go, we have to go to you before we go to the, to the Board of Selectmen or anyone else. So there's plenty of time to do that, but.
Mary, maybe, can I answer this a little bit? Maybe I can make this a little bit clearer.
I'm, I'm, you know, what's, what's intriguing to me is I'm merely trying to get an answer and I, 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 if there is no answer, then fine.
No, I'm going to give you an answer, Mary. So my role as the planning board's designate member of the Affordable Housing Trust is to keep the board abreast of things that are happening with the Affordable Housing Trust. And this is our biggest initiative. So if I'm not keeping you abreast of what's happening with this project, that is my fault and I'll take the blame. The planning board is only advised, has one specific thing they have to do, which is they have to advise the Board of Selectmen as to whether this proposal is appropriate before it goes to town meeting. And that's going to happen, but it's not going to town meeting for a long time, not, surely not before next fall and probably not even until a year from now. So your, the formal vote of the planning board is months and months away. But if you, you know, I, I would love to.
No, I'm, I, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. Thank you. That's all I was looking for.
Okay.
That's really all was the, the process that I was looking for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, well, maybe we've answered it then. Good, thank you.
All right, guys, let's, let's go through this. Sue, can you get through the rest of these quickly? I just have a couple of other comments at the end of this meeting. For.
Do you want me just to, to? Maya, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Do you want me just to hit the heading and ask if there's any questions?
Yeah, yeah, why don't we just do that now?
I think we've already gone over the smart growth.
Right.
The open space and recreation plan, I've forwarded. The open space and recreation plan, I forwarded you the all of the recommendations. We had a meeting this week. Some recommendations were adjusted, some more were added. As those continue to evolve, we'll keep that draft posted. I expect that will be within the next come in couple of months, that will be completed. I'm still having trouble with the Western Woods on one front, getting the consultant to begin the work. But on the other hand, we are working on a an agreement with the Cape Ann Trail Stewards where they would provide stewardship services. So that's good news. That's been forwarded on to the Board of Selectmen. The wastewater treatment feasibility study is nearly complete. We expect that within the month as well. Everyone is probably well aware of what's going on with the forty B.
Can I ask about the wastewater treatment facility in the LCD? Sure. I mean, I read that grant and I didn't think it was going to be studied in the LCD. So could you expand upon that, please?
So the so what has happened with the wastewater treatment facility study was about looking at options for getting the wastewater treatment off the waterfront and off that site and leaving just a pumping station there. They've gone through their due diligence. They've looked at Beverly, they're looking at Gloucester, they're writing the report on the pros and cons, likelihood of those. And then they're also looking at whether anything could be done in moving a facility to the limited commercial district, whether it would be a partial or a full or just really from a very, very high level because they're not looking at it's not engineering wise.
You know, as an as an engineer, you know, to pump that stuff up the street and rip the street up to pump it up there to treat it and then bring it all back down to outfall it into the ocean. That's a lot of digging it up and a lot of pipes. I I just do not see. I don't even know why that would be studied.
Well, it's it's studied because it's studied because or it it is out there as an option because environmentally it makes some sense. But any, if any move off the away from its or even at its current facility at its current location is going to be costly. There isn't any way around. Some option is going to be costly. The then you just have to look at what are the benefits. But this is nowhere near an engineering study for that option. That is just kind of saying it's worth a look or it's not worth a look. It's really a paragraph.
Makes no sense, but okay. All right. Are we done, Sue?
Yeah, I've known, I've only got a few things going. The local rapid recovery grant that that project is underway and that will be a quick turnaround. I'm happy to answer any questions. It's a lot of technical stuff if and then we've got other grants that are being considered.
Okay.
Around the downtown mostly. And then the Community One Stop is just an expression of interest, trying to find out if funding is available for other studies.
Ron, I have a question on the last item.
Yes, ma'am.
So there looks like something was submitted as an expression of interest to the state's new community one stop and one of them is an LCD strategic plan. How would that be any different from what we're proposing to the Finance Committee?
It would not be, it would not be a lot different. So I'm putting it out there to see if there is a funding source or what it could do, however, would be it it could be, it could, it could take what we've done and go further and I won't know until they've evaluated it and then know where we are in the process then. But in the event that things fell apart and the board decided they definitely wanted an LCD strategic plan, I wanted to have it out there in the universe of funding possibilities.
So another process question, and it's a question, merely a question. So how does it, how does the planning department and the planning board work and function if we're kind of going at the same target in different ways? I I guess another way to ask it is shouldn't these types of things be come to the planning board and the planning board then kind of says, yes, let's put that in motion and let's go after that grant? It seems as if we're competing against trying to get something done in two different ways and it seems counterintuitive.
Well, we're not, we're not competing. I'm in a position to work on this stuff daily. You we you meet twice a month and very often cannot make a decision until months go by. So this is, this is my job and I know that you've always had some difficulty understanding what I do and how it's separate from you, from what the board does, but this is not, it's not in competition and I'm doing it to support your work. All of these things have, all of these things have been discussed.
Oh, because I had never heard of the this new community one stop. So I I don't remember discussing it.
Well, I didn't, we didn't discuss the community one stop. This is a brand new program. And this had a very tight turnaround in terms of me getting it, getting it done. So I don't I I guess I just really try to suggest that you trust that I am working to put the tools in front of you and try to find funding for those. But at every, every time I do that, it's I get a question of why I haven't come to you first, but I don't know how to answer. I don't know how to stop your confusion.
Now, Sue can, you know, continue doing your job. I think you're doing a great job. Get the funding.
Can you, can you just let us know where this is posted? So I can just see what the details are?
I think she probably.
Is it on the grants page?
I do not recall if I put it on the grants page. It was submitted Friday. I don't believe it's on the I don't believe it's on the grants page yet. But it will be just as all of them will be.
So you'll get that out there for us?
I will, and I'm on vacation in about two, ten minutes. So it won't be tomorrow. It won't be today. It won't be for a week.
Okay, thank you, Sue. I want to just finish up quickly. We're really running late. Helene tells me we've gotten no comments on the minutes. So I'm going to move that we approved the minutes of March twenty second. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Olney?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes.
Ron, can I ask you a quick question about that, about something?
You've got to.
Go ahead.
Am I, is it, am I offending somebody by asking a question?
Oh, no, go ahead.
Okay. I just, in the minutes, it said Mr. Whitten from KP Law was going to work on an opinion regarding the new legislation. And I just wondered if if that was coming anytime soon or when we could expect that.
Yeah, I don't know. I haven't spoken to him on that, but we can get an answer. I can try to get you an answer on that. Sue, do you have, you have any?
What was it, the opinion on?
On the, um, the two, the housing, the forty A, is it called the forty A?
The Housing Choice Regulations?
Yes.
I I'm sorry, I don't understand what he was providing an opinion on. Is it on the agenda?
On the minutes.
Oh, on the minutes.
We can circle back on that and get an answer next meeting. I'll skip the subcommittee and liaison updates. The Helene keeps getting something would a and a notice from MAPC Matters. She doesn't know where to put it. Is anyone interested in that newsletter that comes out? In in receiving it anymore? Otherwise, I was going to just kind of have Helene not send it to the whole board.
Yeah, no, just put it in the box. I get it individually already anyway. So I get it twice when she sends it. So, yeah, no more.
Okay. The re-credification meeting has been reset up, Sue, for four twenty nine. And I just wanted to share with the board something that I've been working on and whether you guys think this is valuable. I noticed in our current bylaws, there's no table of contents. So, you know, I went ahead and created the table of contents for the two thousand eighteen version. And then what I've done is, and can you see the screen here? What I've done is put the the current bylaws against the Mark Bobrowski proposed bylaws. And then in the center, I'm trying to create a simple mapping of where these bylaws have gone and where they came from. And I I I went through and it's a draft. I've gotten through the first two or three. I'm wondering if this document would be valuable to the board if I continue to work on this and get this kind of thing mapped. You bet, Ron.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. And I've been working on something kind of similar just for my own edification. Just trying to figure this all out, which is sort of a cheat sheet, which shows what's there and what the lan- current language of some of these things is and what we're proposing and why that maybe we can send out to their everyone in town to so they understand what the hell we're doing.
Chris, I, i- if you want, I would work with you on that. I can do this, this and and you can have, maybe we could combine the document.
Yeah, man, why don't I send what I've been working on to you, Ron? You can take a look at it.
And I'll send what I've been working on to you and
Right, good.
We'll, we'll, we'll see. And then we'll need, I'll need some of Mark's input. Some of these, I don't know if they're new or where they went or what. So I think we'll have something a little more simplified to present whenever we do present this and whenever we do finish this. So good, I'll continue to work on this. Thank you.
Ron, I think that's great. And I think, you know, with Chris things with Chris's combined, if we can start working towards that matrix of change, a lot of residents are asking for what are the changes, what are the impacts, how is it going to impact, you know, them or their current neighborhood? So.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think we need a document like that. So okay, thank you. Sarah Melish, you have your hand up. I'll, I'll you go ahead and speak.
Thank you. Did you vote with respect to the Planning Board capital budget item?
We did not. We did not circle back. You're right, and I don't have a full board now.
We have a quorum.
Yeah, we do have a quorum and the two that left were against this. So you know, in light of what we've talked about, Mary, I'll, did you want to still go forward with this? Now that Sue is talking about getting some grant money. Do you still want to push this in front of the FinCom? You know, listening to the tape, I just got the the feeling that the FinCom wasn't exactly embracing spending money at this time. So I don't know if we, we, you know, will be frustrated again or I know, Sarah, you can't spend, speak for the FinCom, but the feeling is you need more definition or
We we need to vote.
Firm quote, you need a firm quote for us because we're never going to get a quote in time.
We need to vote next week, Wednesday, Thursday. I think it's Thursday.
I mean, right now, we would be pushing the same thing in front of you. I I think if 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 we decide to continue, I don't haven't made any changes correct. So Mary, any comments? I'm moving forward on this.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm still in favor of it. I think that we the the price should go down. I think we can do some of this in-house. I think I think it's still very important. That's just my vote.
Okay. Any other comments from board members?
Helene's waving her hand.
Yeah, this is, this is nowhere on the agenda does it say that you're going to take a vote on a matter that is this extreme, this this important. And I think it would be problematic with two members out two members no longer there for the evening to vote on a matter that is not on the agenda.
Well, it is on the, it is on the agenda.
Yeah. Where does it say vote?
Well, it doesn't say vote, but we've
You never write vote.
We never wrote vote in the past and it's LCD Study Update Meeting with the FinCom, Foley. That's what it's
It doesn't say vote or possible vote. That's, you know what? You if you do it your way, but I'm saying that when there is a vote that's asking for a capital expenditure of fifty thousand dollars, it pretty much should say it on the agenda if you're going to vote tonight. If you don't, and if you don't have the whole board there and the two people that are not there are opposed to it, it could, I don't, I don't like it. But once again, I'm just the paid employee. So, bye.
Well, we could do nothing and just resubmit it.
We we, our final vote is next, next week, Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah, well, we don't meet again, Sarah, till the twenty sixth. So this is, this has got to be now or never, I guess.
Well, yeah, if we don't have a consensus of the board, then we vote against it.
Well, the consensus of the board was to move it forward. It got kicked back to us. We sort of discussed it, but I, without being able to vote on it, I would just resubmit it, see where it goes. I mean.
Consensus of the board pushed it to that point.
So I, 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 I can't.
I'm sorry, I'm challenged to support it because there's so much diversity.
Well, it was voted forty-two to proceed with this. So I would let that vote stand, in my opinion.
But we returned it to you. You didn't have another vote.
Yeah, I didn't think we were, we were going to revote on it. I think we were just going to discuss it and try to clarify. I thought the the it wasn't to a vote on resubmitting it. I thought it was a vote to just clarify some items. I guess your committee wanted to do, figured that they could do some things themselves or the town could and I thought it was subject to a rewrite. But then again, if it is a rewrite, I guess we'd have to vote on the rewrite. So I don't know.
Ron, this is Christine. Can I ask a question?
Yes, Christine.
Um, Sarah, and actually for Sarah, is it possible if it gets to the FinCom that the amount is changed? Is the, or does it need to be approved as written?
So the challenge is, is that the FinCom did not understand the requirement for having additional study. And they were not willing to approve it. And unless there's some additional information regarding that submission, my guess is they won't approve it.
So is there an addition?
So is there an additional study? Was there a study to begin with that we paid for?
There was a, a capital item submitted of $40,000. I don't know where that came from. I think your study was for $50,000.
I think, I, I think Greg made that number. I think he took some kind of average.
Right.
I think that came from Greg Fettishfield, that, the reduced number.
Right. And, and I think the Finance Committee was concerned regarding the number of planning board studies, planning studies that have been done over the past years and whether they have resulted in any financial impact to the town. And so there was confusion at the last Finance Committee meeting, whether the board fully supported it. And $50,000 seemed to be like a significant amount of money. And we weren't willing to support it unless it was gonna result in some benefits to the town.
Ron?
Yes, go ahead, Sue.
Maybe, maybe you just, maybe I, maybe you want to suggest us to straw poll and not a vote, not a binding vote to, to say whether you support requesting funds from the LCD. I don't know if that helps, Helene. Helene's on mute.
Helene, you're on mute.
Okay, I, I, I'm just saying that the agenda item is to discuss a study. It does not have any action to go with it. And I, all I'm saying is, when you, the, the fact that the two people that are opposed to it are gone, they have left for the evening. There's some, I don't know. They could contest it, contest your vote.
Sarah has the.
Study Update Meeting with the FinCom. Isn't that what it says?
Sarah Relish has had the, at least had the benefit of the discussion. So I, is, I, I'm just, I have no, no position here except to say that it is not on the agenda.
I don't know the last time we had a vote on our agenda, if there was ever a vote on our agenda.
Yeah, we never wrote vote on the agenda.
And Gary Gilbert was at the FinCom meeting.
I don't, I don't see that on anybody's agenda, any.
And they left. Well, maybe you could ask, maybe you could ask, I mean, do what you want this time. But that was a suggestion by someone from Town Council that if you're going to vote, you put vote on the agenda.
All right.
Talking about money, you're not, you know, you're not talking about how many stories you think that maybe an apartment building should be. So.
Sarah, can you take, can you take, can you put this one item on hold till your second meeting? Because we will meet again on the 26th.
So, yeah, we can put it off to the 28th.
Well, beautiful. Why don't we just do that?
Let's do that. We need to resolve it.
We will resolve it first thing. Helene, make sure we put this on the agenda for next meeting and we will resolve it.
As a vote.
As a vote.
Thank you.
Okay. I move we adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second that too.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio?
Yes.
Mr. Olney?
Yes.
See you in two weeks. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye now.